Vreeman.
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Corbin?
Here.
Sol?
Here.
Rowan? Shay?
Here.
Schultheis? Mayor Box?
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We are going to begin this evening's meeting first with opening prayer as we have done for many years this evening by City Manager Van Beek, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance and we would invite you to join us.
Thank you, please join me in prayer. God, we thank you for this week. We thank you as we reflect back on last week where we had literally hundreds of thousands of people come to our town. We thank you for an overall delivery of safety for our visitors, for our residents, for our workers. We thank you for wonderful weather and wonderful memories that were made as people enjoyed the beauty of your creation, in this sense tulips, but also hopefully memories made with family and friends. Thank you again for safety. We ask you for continued input and wisdom as we discuss the matter of the cities and the city and council makes decision this evening. It's your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Next item on the agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask if anyone would like to do that, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Okay, 4A, excuse the absences of council members Bird, Rowan, and Schultheis. 4B, approve the minutes of the April sixteen twenty twenty-five regular, April sixteen twenty twenty-five budget study session, April seventeen twenty twenty-five budget study session, and April twenty-three twenty twenty-five study session. 4C, accept executed oath of office. 4D, a rezoning request for four three eight four Blue Star Highway with final adoption, May twenty-one twenty twenty-five. 4E, claims filed against the city. 4F, annual business license renewals for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. 4G, adopt a resolution to approve adjustments to our Act fifty-one street network. 4H, approve budget for Columbia Avenue reconstruction project. 4I, approve the budget for Phase Two of the Southwest Heights Improvement Project. 4J, award the bid for the twenty twenty-five resurfacing project. 4K, award the bid for the twenty twenty-five sidewalk repair project. 4L, award the bid for Forty-Eighth Street Sidewalk Connection Project. 4M, award the bid for Vennralti Farm Resurfacing Project. 4N, set a hearing for Coops Incorporated PA one ninety-eight tax abatement request. 4O, award the bid for portable restroom services. 4P, approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget for Holland Local Development Finance Authority Smart Zone. 4Q, accept the January financial reports. 4R, approve the contract for lawn maintenance and mowing for the Waverly Fire Station. And for S, approve a revocable license agreement for Twenty East Eighth Street, a projecting sign.
Thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Yes, Mr. Corbin?
Mr. Mayor, yes, item 4D to be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda for discussion under twelve B one.
Great, thank you. Any other member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council?
Move to approve the agenda as presented with the removal of item D.
We have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Michigan, we provide the public the opportunity to address council at our regular meetings, at our study sessions, and at every board committee and commission meeting. We do have guidelines that we ask you to follow. We ask you to come to the podium, please state your name and the municipality in which you live because it's important for us to know whether you are a resident of the city of Holland or not. Each speaker is limited to five minutes and there are three lights on the dais to help you. There is a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means that you're doing well on time. The yellow light means that you have one minute left and the red light means that your time has expired and we are strict about that. When you come to the podium, we do also ask that you address council. We do not want you to make any comments to any other members of the public. Please direct all of your comments to us. This is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to be able to speak to us. We don't engage in conversation or discussion or answer direct questions at this time, but if there's a question that staff can answer for you, they may be able to circle back to you after the meeting. Now, having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson-Zealand. Good evening, council. I'm sure you are all delighted as the community with Tulip Time Festival. There's just something about it that brings us together to enjoy heritage in the gorgeous city. Even the tulips celebrated with robust color and stature. Many thanks to all and to the tremendous effort it takes. This has to be the best one ever. Congratulations, Holland. Thank you, Councilman Vreeman, for commandeering the volunteers to skillfully and joyfully present of the city's history and gorgeous beauty. I heard from someone who was involved with the Tulip Time Office that this event makes forty million dollars for the community. That is evidence of success. The National Day of Prayer Dinner at the Civic Center Place, May first, the day before the opening of Tulip Time, exceeded the attendance of all the former years. Four hundred dinners were served, almost the capacity of the CCP Great Room. Fifty local businesses, churches, and private citizens generously donated. They provided a wonderful evening of food, worship, and prayer, and personal ministry to organizations like the Men's Gateway Mission, Ragamuffins, Grant Me Hope, Escape Ministry, youth groups, churches, families, just to mention a few. We are hoping next year the Tulip Time Office will put this event on their agenda. National Day of Prayer is May seventh, twenty twenty-six, right in the middle of Tulip Time, save the date. Now to shift gears here about something that was introduced at the last study session. I have discussed your decision to possibly serving alcohol at the Ice Rink Park with many people. I wish they had been here to hear the presentation and reasoning. I pretty much told them what was said and asked for their thoughts. Matt Van Dyken opened up the conversation at the study session. He said that the principal shopping social district serves alcohol outdoors successfully with no reported incidents. In fact, many shoppers are pleased with it. Adults usually are the ones who shop, dine, and drink alcohol. Children may be present, but this is not a children's activity. For example, they do not serve alcohol at Out of the Box or Kill Ones or the Peanut Shop that are primary stores catering to children. Then Mr. Van Dyken shifted to serving alcohol at the Ice Rink Park. The people asked what they thought. I asked the people what they thought about this and they grimaced at the thought. Here's what they said. The Ice Rink Park is meant for families and children. Why would the council consider serving alcohol at the park? I know alcohol is not permitted at Centennial Park and I assume neither is it allowed at the unique forum Colin Park Bandshells Stage area on Tuesday at the American Legion Concerts. Another comment, the Ice Rink Park is not a competitive sports arena. My understanding that Hope College has offered their hockey team to help kids learn to skate for free lessons. Another comment, as adults and college students will be welcome to skate there, but do you want them skating after having a few drinks? Aren't the children in danger if there is speed skating or recklessness? What about the skater and his/her's safety? Has Attorney Duckworth weighed in on the liability here? Drinking and driving seems to have somewhat similar logic as drinking and skating. So, I hope I have not misjudged your intentions. My advice here is, if in doubt, don't. Lawsuits are pretty messy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to address council in person at our meetings, we do also provide the opportunity for them to send written communications to council and we have an email address specifically for that purpose. It is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, that's publiccomment@cityofholland.com. When we receive those, we accept those into the record at our regular meetings. We do not read them out loud, but just accept them into the record. We do not have any this evening, but I always like to make sure that people know that that is a possibility. Next item on the agenda is the item that was removed from the consent agenda. It's item twelve B one, which is the proposed rezoning request for-
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
We have number seven.
Did I miss one?
Two of them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you know, that's kind of an important one, isn't it? That's, I'm sorry, I skipped right over that one. I think that we have a special order of the day. We'll go back to item number seven B, Holland Energy Fund Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six Budget Approval. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's kind of the reason why we're here this evening, isn't it?
Yeah. So first, just to make sure, we're going to talk just about the Holland Energy Fund and the proposed fiscal twenty twenty-six budget approval. I think the best way that we'll handle both of these, if it's okay with you, Mayor, staff will make a presentation, then we'll do the public hearing at the end of the staff presentation. That sound appropriate?
I think since I was going to skip over it completely, we can do both of them together.
Excellent. So I'm going to have Lynn come up. Lynn, the clicker is there for you, it should be working. But particularly with the Holland Energy Fund, I know for those of you that serve on that fund and we also have members of the Holland Board of Public Works that serve on that and others, just fantastic momentum and kind of refocusing by that group. I want to specifically call out Andrew Reynolds from the Holland Board of Public Works staff and Dan Borsma from the city staff. I just think a lot of fantastic ideas and there's nothing wrong with you try something and then you try it out and sometimes you change course. And I think here's a great example that maybe doesn't come out totally in the budget, but a lot of great projects that are going on that I think are hitting not only the goals that we've established in the energy fund that reach over to the Community Energy Plan, but are also helping our residents. So with that, Lynn just has a few slides about the Holland Energy Fund.
Thank you, Keith. So before we begin, I kind of want to talk about why it is interesting that we're doing this separate, but then it also gets included with the city. But that's because Holland Energy Fund is a 501(c)(3) entity and it supports the City of Holland and Board of Public Works Long-Term Community Energy Plan. So therefore, we're required to have a separate board and we pass this separate budget. So the budget I'm going to talk to you about was actually approved by their board on March nineteenth and then will be included in the city's overall budget. So you may, like Keith mentioned, we have some really popular programs. You may have heard about Home Energy 101 and it is a great program that is, we partner with local nonprofits and we provide training and support for home energy savings efforts. So let's look through what the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget includes with regards to that. So first of all, we have budgeted revenues of three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And those mostly consist of a two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar transfer from the city. But we also have forty-one thousand budgeted for interest income and another ten thousand dollars for a grant that was received. So you can see some of the hard work. We actually had gotten a grant for up to a hundred thousand in this current year, so the ten thousand represents what remains because the grant period ends actually in fiscal year twenty-six. On the expenditure side, the bulk of the budget this year goes to the home energy program expenses. So we have two hundred twelve thousand six hundred dollars for those programs and that's divided by the Home Energy 101 program, which we've talked about. And then we also have a Home Energy 201. It's been a pilot program that we've been working through this year and as well as some early thoughts about having a placeholder for our business, Energy 101 program. So we also have a hundred six thousand one hundred dollars for the Community Energy Plan and this is really a placeholder so that we have money available if we need to assist with some of the implementation efforts of anything that comes out of the review of the Community Energy Plan Group. We have two thousand dollars dedicated to the Business Energy Program and this is still just kind of money to investigate what we might want to do and we work closely with the Holland Board of Public Works on a lot of these matters, including this one. And then finally, administrative, we have just thirty-four hundred dollars. And while it might seem small, it is important to note that just a few years ago, the administrative cost for this program was over sixty thousand dollars a year. So that's one of those great things we've been successful in adding to to this program, spending less on what we do so we can have more money go to the program and the citizens who benefit from it. So with that, the fund will end with a projected ending balance of a little over one point one million dollars and that money is reserved to be used for these efforts in future years. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the budget.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Shay?
Thank you so much, Lynn. Not so much a question, so I apologize if I'm out of order on this, but I just want to echo the gratitude and support that we got via some cards in the mail from the public supporting this awesome, all these programs and all this awesome stuff. So, thanks.
Great. Any other comments or questions for staff? Great, thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You want to move on to the next presentation? I think that, is that you as well, Lynn? Okay, you do want to do the public hearing and then the next presentation. All right, we can do that. So at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing in regard to the Holland Energy Fund Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six Budget. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the Holland Energy Fund Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six Budget?
Move to approve.
Moved by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item seven C, Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six City Budget. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I think I say often, kind of this becomes the thing that I say at this time of the year, is that at this point, this seems, I don't know if anticlimactic is the right word, but there's so much work and so much and months of discussion that we all know has gone into this. That you get to this point and I look out and I see, you know, Anne and staff. And I I don't want to skip over the fact that this, quite frankly, is probably the most important thing collectively that we do every year. And I think we use really good process and hopefully the fact that we have kind of an empty chambers is a good thing, not a bad thing, but it's also appropriate to take a moment and go through and talk about the process here. So as you all know, but because some people might be seeing this for the first time, this year we kind of talked about a theme of stability and it was stability not only fiscally, which I'll talk about and I'm sure Lynn and Dave will talk about also, but also organizationally. I think there's a slide that Lynn's going to highlight here that the amount of capital investment that not only we've made in recent years, but continue to make as reflected in this budget is not just more of the same, it's an above and beyond investment that we're making in capital. Which I know has been a consistent theme and priority for you as council. But I also think it reflects just wise stewardship of public money that we're investing back in infrastructure and in quality of life and amenities for our community. And sometimes they're amenities and sometimes they're just core, really necessary things like roads and sewer lines and water service and all the things that I hope appropriately, sometimes our citizens just take those for granted. I think it's good sometimes when they take them for granted because they just expect that we're delivering and providing those, so that's great. You also know that long-term planning has really become a bedrock foundational thing that we do. And thank you for your prodding to make sure that we continue to do that and the staffing that we're able to invest in that. I think it continues to serve us well. We knew, right, that for several years now, that this fiscal year budget, twenty twenty-six, which again for the viewing public, starts on July one of twenty twenty-five and it goes into twenty twenty-six, thus we call it the twenty-six budget. But then next year also, just because of the way some debt and different expenses that we have, these were going to be two tighter years, if you would. So there were things definitely that we knew that departments probably or citizens maybe would have liked to have in the budget that we have just delayed or said no to because we have to. Because now's the time, right, to take a look at and make sure that we're being, continue to be prudent with our resources and we appreciate our community for that. Now, that's not panic, that's not worry. That's just continuing to take a look at and make sure that we never get out over our skis, if you would, or doing something that will create a situation where we would be in any form of jeopardy. We also know and thank you, and we'll talk about that in the strategic plan in a little bit, that we've definitely identified the impacts of the Headley Amendment and then as that interplays with Proposal A, we're continuing to do more discussion and education with all of you and we think that will continue to be something that we also need to engage the public with and potentially, and I think at some point possibly in this fiscal year, not only have a discussion with the public, but also bring a potential proposal to them about that issue. So with that introduction, Lynn is going to go over the budget more in general and then Dave Koster is also here because this budget also reflects adoption for the Holland Board of Public Works and the utilities that they provide and the rates that they charge. Thanks, Lynn.
Thanks, Keith. So before I get into some of the details, I just want to kind of put another plug in for the budget in brief because we have both the full document, which is in excess of four hundred pages actually, and it's got a lot of great information. I encourage you to all look at it in more detail if anybody has questions. But we also have a nine-page budget in brief, which kind of summarizes the entire budget and just hits the highlights but has a lot of valuable information and that is available online as well. So as you can see, I went ahead and took some of the information right out of the budget in brief to talk about tonight. And I will indicate, as Keith mentioned, the budget itself includes a lot of information. It is presented with the Holland Board of Public Works together. So some of this information is the combined city and I'll make sure I note one that is. And then I will also talk in more detail about the city's general fund because it's the main operating fund for the city. And then Dave Koster has joined us this evening and he will give you a little bit more information on the utility funds because that is also a very large part of the budget. Actually, it's the largest. And finally, we are going to talk a little bit about millage rates because that is part of what we do at this time as well. So as we can see here, this first chart is the total budget, so it's combined city and Board of Public Works. And fiscal year twenty twenty-six total revenues are two hundred twenty-four million, three hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. So what the chart shows is we do this every year, we kind of look to see what drives some of those revenues and we are fairly consistent with the prior years as to the categories. The largest being charges for services at seventy percent and that is our utility bills, right? So those are considered charges for services, so that kind of makes sense. And then taxes come in at fourteen percent and that is the next largest and that really represents the property taxes and assessments that we get. On the expenditure side, we have two hundred sixteen million, six hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred. And again, the categories are very consistent, the largest being the BPW's expenditures for the utilities is fifty-nine percent. And then we see the general fund at sixteen percent. So the remaining are just broken down by funds because again, we include all the funds in the overall budget that we present. And what do I mean by that? It's like Windmill Island Garden is a fund and all of our special revenue funds of which one we just talked about was Holland Energy Fund. So now I'm going to talk a little bit more about the general fund because like I mentioned, it's the main operating fund for the city. And on the general fund revenues, we have included a budget of thirty-five point seven million dollars. And the general fund is, the main revenue source is property taxes. And this year, that total is seventeen point two million or about forty-eight percent. And that is followed by six point seven million represent transfers in, mostly from the BPW dividend and state revenue sharing at six point six million. That's like our share of state sales tax and then personal property tax replacement. So you see that I have in this chart this dollar bill and what this is representing, I always like to include this because when the city is responsible for billing all the property taxes for not only the city, but for all the schools, for any taxing districts, so it's schools, the pool authority, the library, and so on. So when people come to pay their bill at the city, sometimes it can be confusing and people think that the city gets to keep all that money, which would be nice. But we actually only get to keep about thirty-three percent. So as this chart shows, it kind of shows what money goes to the other different taxing authorities. So then on the expenditure side, we have thirty-five point seven million. So we have the same equal revenues and expenditures in our budget. So it's interesting to see, well, what do we do with all that general fund money? So as you can see, fifty percent is actually allocated to public safety. So our police department, our fire services, those are big expenditures, but very much needed. So that's the largest from the general fund. We also see sixteen point eight percent in parks and we have some very nice parks and we've really made some improvements over the past. So that is a large part of our general fund budget. And then it takes seventeen point seven percent just to run the city and that includes a whole lot of departments, elections, the manager's office, the finance office, the assessors. So that total is seventeen point seven percent and so forth. But the interesting one you might see is that the downtown group is very, very small. And you might ask, well, does that make sense? And really, it's important to note that the downtown group, a lot of the things we do down there actually comes from assessments that are accounted for in separate funds so that we make sure we use all the resources from those funds for the downtown area. So all of this information can be found in a lot more detail in the full budget online. But then I wanted to highlight something that Keith had already mentioned is the five-year capital. So we include, we actually do look at capital for five to ten years and actually in some cases fifty years, but we only include five right here. And on this, you will see that over the next five years, we have the we, and this is a combined city- the we, and this is a combined city and Board of Public Works, 260 mil, 69 million dollars of investments over the next five years. Actually, 71.7 is budgeted in fiscal year 2026. And it's not hard to look around and see where some of that money is going. We have the Holland City Fiber Project continuing, we have the ICE Park, we have, uh, some updates planned at Van Ralty Farm, and we have a pump cycle track and recycling center, just to mention a few. So again, if you want to see what the whole capital plan is, there's actually a lot of pictures in the full budget document on each project, along with the, um, potential operating impact. So as I mentioned, I wanted to talk a little bit about our tax rate development, because that is part of the annual budget process. And so it's, the Michigan State, um, govern, law governs the process. So we just follow, uh, what they, um, dictate. So there's a lot of different things, including a lot of different calculations and a lot of different rates we talk about. So we talk about the ch, city charter authorized tax rate, and that is what the city's, uh, charter authorizes, and I'll, I'll show you what that is in a minute. We also then have to go through these calculations in according to the law. And, um, one of them's called a Headley rollback calculation, which we've talked about. And then the truth and taxation formula, formula calculation. And those two are both, all the information and calculations are included in Appendix A in the full budget. And then we finally have what the city proposed rate. So, well, what does all that mean? So here's what it kind of looks like. So we see that 17.5 is the city's authorized tax rate. So that is what the city has said that, um, they authorize the property tax rate to go up to that. That doesn't mean we, uh, let, actually levy the 17.5, but that's what we're authorized to. So then on the bottom, we have the city proposed rate and 13.8692. And that is what we are proposing in this budget, budget to have as the tax, the millage rate. And that is the same rate for the last 14 years, because we've really tried to keep, um, the tax millage rate the same without having to increase that. So what is that Headley rollback rate? So the Headley rollback rate is one of those calculations. And that particular calculation says that you have to do this calculation in your number, when it comes down to it. It tells you, well, even though you have an authorized rate of 17.5, even if you wanted to raise your, set that bottom rate at say 15, you could not. Because you are only limited to whatever that Headley rollback rate is. So before we look at a little bit more of that impact of the Headley and what it's done over the last few years, I did want to point out that this chart I like, um, is the tax rate comparison. So each year, we take 55 different municipalities in the state of Michigan, and we keep the same, same, um, 55. And as you can see, we are number 18 on the lowest, uh, rates, which is a good place to be. And a lot of those ones above us have an asterisk, and those mean they have other revenue, those, they have city income tax. So if they have a city income tax, their residents are already paying a different tax, and that's why their property tax in those cases is lower. And then some of the other ones just have different unique situations that drives other sources of revenue. But overall, we're happy to report that we are still 18, so we're in the, in the lowest 20. So here's the chart that we've been monitoring on the city for, uh, the last several years, because it kind of is a graphical representation of how, of what this Headley reduction is doing to the city. Um, so you can see the top line is the authorized rate, and the, um, actual rate we charge is in the bar. And you can see again, it's stayed consistent for the last 14 years. But it's that Headley rate which keeps getting reduced. And so what'll happen is eventually that could intersect with what we have been holding our rate with at for 14 years. So that's just, um, something to continue to monitor, which I think we are doing at this time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Dave with the, uh, Board of Public Works to go over a lot of information on that side.
Thanks Lynn. Good evening Mayor, Member City Council. I'll try to be brief with some slides here just to give an update of the four utilities that are supported by the, uh, Holland Board of Public Works. Overall, among the four utilities, the good news here is that our budget, actually our operating budget is down year to year. We're about a couple million dollars less, uh, this year. The distribution of our funds is pretty similar. Uh, the bulk of our power, bulk of our expenditures go to, uh, fuel and purchase power in our electric utility. Um, but, uh, really no major changes here, and some good cost savings that have occurred across each utility that I'll highlight as we move into those specific areas. Again, some good news in electric, there are no rate changes planned, uh, and proposed for this year. Matter of fact, in our five-year projection, uh, we're also looking at no rate change next year, and then maybe some modest increases afterward. It's important to note that, uh, customers are actually paying less today than they were 10 years ago for their electric service. Um, matter of fact, about $4 a month, uh, less. And as we'll look at the comparison charts here in a moment, each, each customer is saving about $500 a year when compared to the neighboring investor-owned utility. So, um, matter of fact, there was a report that came out recently that said that the Holland BPW's revenues per kilowatt hour were the lowest in 2023, just, uh, the last full year that they measured, uh, here in the lower peninsula, whether that's municipal, co-op, or investor-owned utility. So something really important, I think, to point out there. Um, we're getting some savings due to the fact that we've, uh, entered into some prepaid natural gas contracts that help lower our operating costs. Uh, and, uh, we're also going to be, uh, changing some of our discharge from Holland Energy Park, uh, to direct discharge. It'll save us some money as well, as opposed to going to the sanitary sewer. All those are good cost savings. We've also had some tree trimming, uh, contract renewal that have saved, uh, and so overall, things look very stable in the electric utility. We do have some capital expenditures planned over the next five years, about 82 million here. A lot of that is in distribution improvements, uh, replacing aging infrastructure in our distribution network, undergrounding some areas that are overhead, and we'll be starting to replace some equipment in our substations as well. There's no debt in the electric utility. We're completely debt-free there, except for our small contribution to the pension debt, that's between the Holland BPW and the city, and that'll be done here in fiscal 26 as well. We're not planning any new debt issuances coming up in the electric utility. So again, this is all three customer classes, residential, commercial, and industrial, with some comparisons here to the investor-owned utilities and some other municipalities. Apart from residential, which is slightly behind Zeeland, um, uh, but we actually are, uh, better in every rate class against every, uh, type of, uh, uh, entity otherwise, especially in the commercial and industrial area. And then overall, as I mentioned, we're the lowest in the, the lower peninsula here, so a very cost-effective comparison, uh, for the electric utility. Moving to the broadband utilities, as everybody here knows, uh, we are in the, uh, throes of, uh, building out the Holland City Fiber Network. Uh, we are about halfway through, uh, the city, and, uh, excited to say that our projection is that by the end of this next fiscal year, we'll be done with the Passings Network. We are starting to get customers, uh, service in, uh, up and running in those fiber hoods that we've been through at this point. And so our financial projections are based upon the blend of services that our customers have elected so far, which is a combination of the 2 gigabit per second service and the 10 gigabit per second service, and then some other add-ons that are electable. And so when we look at that revenue projection, uh, going forward, it is a very strong, uh, picture for the broadband utility. Again, we do have some planned capital expenditures over the next five years, finishing out the Passings Network here, uh, which is everything that goes past every home and business, is about $9 million through fiscal 26, a total of $24.4 million project. That was supported by the, uh, bonds that were issued by the city that are being repaid by the millage that was adopted by the voters of the city. Then the drops, which go from the street or the backlot to the home, is another roughly $12 million in total, about 3, 3 million here over this next fiscal year. And, uh, that's based upon those that actually elect service. Those drops are initially funded by the electric utility, repaid by the broadband utility to the electric utility, and will be part of the broadband rate that's charged, uh, for that, for that service. So again, everything looks very good in the broadband utility. Our cash flow expectations are fairly strong growth, and if that comes to pass, uh, we actually may be able to, uh, lower rates in the future. And so we're, we're excited about how this is shaping up in the broadband utility. Moving on to the water utility, this is a discussion that we've had for a few years. We are in this period of time where we have a regulatory, uh, constraint that's been put on us by the state of Michigan to replace several galvanized services in our community that have a lead goose neck on the first part of that service line between the water main and the service line to the home. Uh, that is under, remaining about 17 years left on that, uh, that timeline. Um, while we are doing that work, we are also facing an aging distribution network. A lot of communities are in the same boat here as relates to this. They are all kind of the same vintage of pipe. Uh, we're experiencing breaks on some of our post-World War II cast iron pipe as well. And so while we're in there doing the service work, it would not be prudent really just to cover that back up again, and then five years later have to disturb the roadway in order to be able to address the distribution main when it fully reaches end of life or gets to a point where the brakes are just too numerous. So in order to deal with both at the same time, um, we are in a need for additional revenue for the water utility. Last year, we, uh, added about 13% of revenue to the water utility, and we did it through, uh, a tiered rate system for the first time. We're looking at proposing that for residential, we keep the base tier, that first four CCF the same as it is this year, and continue to raise up the second tier, which would do two things. Number one, it would bring more revenue in that we need to address this capital re, uh, replacement plan. But it would also help send a message about smart demand management of water. While we have a large lake out there, we still have a water plant that's nearing capacity. And the last thing that we want to do while we're also dealing with a capital replacement plan, a very, uh, ambitious plan for all of our distribution infrastructure, is to also have to add additional capital expenditure on enlarging the water plant. And so through incentives that we're working with as well, that are incorporated into this budget, and through the tiered rate system, we're looking at trying to send messages around demand management to help people with, uh, wise use of water during those crucial days during the year when we're reaching that, that maximum demand. Uh, we do have capital plans, as we've mentioned here, very, uh, robust capital plans, about 42 million, or about 44 million rather in distribution, out of the about 59 million total for the water utility. Uh, now, it's important to say that while we are raising revenues, and this is the second of three years that we're proposing a, a fairly significant revenue adjustment, we still remain near the lower end of Michigan, uh, utilities as far as water, and this next chart will highlight that. Uh, maybe a little bit tough, uh, to see here, but the red bar down there, that's the Holland BPW's commodity rate, compared with every other community in the city that serves a population of over 10,000. So last year, uh, we were 10th, and we had a fairly large revenue increase. Guess what happened? We actually went down to 8th most, uh, um, or competitive. So we actually improved our position. That gives you an indication that we aren't the only ones doing this. A lot of people are facing very similar constraints and very similar replacement, uh, issues. The two lines that are on this, this graph here represent the, the first tier and the proposed second tier. We're also proposing that for business customers, their irrigation meters be charged that second tier. So just, that was, that'll be a first move for us this next year, uh, to, to bring that into, uh, uh, you know, our recommendations. And so that's one thing I wanted to point out, again, very competitive situation as it relates to water, even with these adjustments. And even after next year, we wouldn't be moving up very far in this graph. Uh, and so I think that, um, the Holland BPW and the city of Holland are in a very good position relative to the proactive planning that we've already done on capital replenishment, and with our rate structure that we have in place for water. In the wastewater utility, here is a very modest increase that we have proposed, um, for this next year. About 3% uh, for the wastewater utility. Uh, we are also adjusting the surcharge. These are the customers that have a very strong, um, concentration in their discharge. Some of our large industrial customers that are, for food processors, for example. Um, since we put in the digester at the wastewater plant, it's been very cost-effective for us, but it's changed some of the capital profile of our assets, so we want to make sure those surcharge rates were also adjusted in this, um, in this budget. We are actually seeing significant savings come from that digester performance. We are actually only having to dispose of roughly about 40% of the solids that are going into the digester. We were hoping to get about 40 to 50% reduction in solids. We're getting closer to 60, 60-plus percent reduction in solids. It also is changing the nature of those solids in a way that give us more flexibility on how we can either reuse those or dispose of those. So all those have significant cost savings to us. Additionally, in this financial plan here for this year, we are planning on receiving from the federal government about $10.9 million underneath the elective pay, uh, process that was put in place under the Inflation Reduction Act. Yes, that is still in place, and yes, that should still be something that we are eligible and going to be receiving. The filing has taken place in, um, February, and so we expect that within the next couple of months that that will be showing up. Again, capital expenditures in the wastewater utility is just under $32 million. Collection system is 15 million. One of the big projects that we're working on, on now at the water reclamation facility is a disinfection project, about an $8 million project, which will also potentially enlarge the flow capacity of that facility for future growth, uh, opportunities. And it moves away from, uh, un, very unstable and volatile chemical prices that we use today for disinfection, and moves it into UV light for disinfection, which is really being driven by our electrical usage and much more stable cost structure, because the BPW's electric system, you would be serving that. Again, here in the wastewater utility, this is more of a five-year picture on that, going backwards in time. You can see that the Holland BPW, again, at the lower end of comparable auto county communities as relates to the wastewater rate. So for the customer bill overall, and I know these numbers are a little bit tough to see, um, you know, we're really talking about most of that adjustment, little under fi, about $5 a month really in the water utility, but again, most of that, this is a typical summer bill. So the typical, uh, non-summer bill in the city of Holland is around 4 CCF, right at that base rate. So everything that you're really seeing here, the adjustments are mostly coming from that irrigation demand. And again, our staff will be working with customers to try to find ways that they can be wiser users of that during those demand periods, such as smart technology, alternative landscaping, and just doing regular irrigation audits to make sure that you're not over watering for the type of soils and, um, you know, landscaping that you have. So this is what we're proposing overall for the BPW and, uh, concludes my comments. So I think Lynn and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? I've, I've got a couple, um, and actually, uh, statement and then a couple of questions. Since I've been on council, we have built a, the anaerobic digester. We've redone Sixth Street, including snowmelt from Freedom Village to, to College Avenue on the street, sidewalks from Freedom Village all the way to River. We're building the ICE Park. We completely rebuilt the Waverly Road Fire Station. We pretty much completely rebuilt the Collin Park Fire Station. Uh, we've redone the, the Graff Nature Center. We did, uh, major repairs to the museum. As you said, we've got the rec center and the, and the pipeline. We've got the pump track and the pipeline. Um, we have the lowest electric rates in the state of Michigan. Um, and we have not raised the tax rate for the taxpayers of the city of Holland for 14 years. There is not a single member of council who is sitting here, whether present or absent, who has raised the tax rate for the people of the city of Holland, Michigan. Um, none of us have been here for that long, um, which I think is a, a pretty great feat, not only for us, but probably says even more for staff, because we certainly could not do this without you guiding us along the way. Um, we have a 50-year municipal capital improvement plan funded. We have a 10 to 20-year, uh, uh, what am I, what am I thinking about Lynn?
Financial forecast.
Financial forecast, thank you. I knew you were going to help me with that. Um, you guys, you have given us incredible tools for us to be able to make good decisions. Um, but, and I want you to go back, uh, to the bar graph that shows, uh, what we're able to charge on a rate and what is happening with Headley. Can you go back to that? The city authorized, I think the, I think the bar graph is the good one, because this is, this is complicated stuff. Yeah, the, the bar graph, I, I'd rather see. Right, there you go, there you go. This is, this is really complicated stuff that we have talked about a lot for us to understand, and I still don't think I completely understand all of the numbers and what's happening, but I think what I think when you look at this bar graph, it shows something that is coming down the line for us. We have been guided by an incredible staff and I think that it is very safe to say that the Holland City Council, for a very long time, when you look at that bar graph, you can go back even well beyond fourteen years, has been very good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars in the City of Holland and has made great decisions with the taxpayers' dollars. That orange line, in just a few years, is going to hit the teal bar. And what does that mean? Well, what that means is the Holland City Council is no longer going to be in the driver's seat with making decisions with the taxpayers' dollars for the City of Holland. What that means is an arbitrary number that is going to be determined by a formula out of Lansing is going to prevent us from being able to determine what the tax rate is for the City of Holland and is going to continue to go down and we are not going to be able to provide the level of services that we have been providing for the people of the City of Holland unless the people of the City of Holland entrust the city council that has proven itself for the last fourteen to twenty years to make a decision, to continue to make good decisions for them. And what does that mean? That means that the people of the City of Holland are going to have to decide through a vote to ratchet that number back up to the seven, ratchet what we're allowed to do back up to the seventeen point five mils. Does that mean that the Holland City Council is going to charge seventeen point five mils? I doubt that because for the last fourteen years, we haven't done that. But we, there is a train coming or there is a ceiling falling. And we see it, staff sees it. I think that it's very important for the people of the City of Holland to see it that in the next few, within the next few years, unless we do something, unless we ask the people of the City of Holland to trust us to continue to make good decisions for them, we are going to be in a difficult position and we're not going to be able to make decisions locally anymore. Why am I saying this now? Because we are going to be making, I'm trying to prepare the people of the City of Holland for a decision that we are going to be asking them to make in the near future to continue to put their faith and confidence in a city council that has for fourteen years straight not raised their taxes. We want them to continue to trust us to make good decisions for them. A council that has a fifty-year municipal capital improvement plan, a twenty-year financial forecast, a city council that has invested in this community, in its roads, in its infrastructure and has been able to do amazing things for this community, and a city council that has looked at this budget and the next budget for the next few years and said, you know what? We need to make sure that we are, keep ourselves in a good financial position. As the city manager said, these are, this is a year of stability, not because we're worried about our finances, but because we want to make sure our finances stay stable. So people of the City of Holland, we are going to be asking you to allow us locally to continue to make decisions on your behalf. I don't know exactly when that, we're going to be asking you for that, but that's going to be happening so that the people of the City of Holland can continue to make decisions for the people of the City of Holland. I want to thank staff for the great work. As Mr. Van Beek said, this is a process that takes about six months for a budget that's one year. It does seem a little bit anticlimactic by the time that we get here. When we asked if there were any questions from council, council just kind of looked and went, no, we've seen this a half a dozen times already. We know this. And we are all very, very comfortable with the work that we have done, even more comfortable with the work that this incredible staff has done. And with that, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
We need a motion.
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. One of these days, I'm going to get that. I'm going to open this up for public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the fiscal year 2026 city budget?
Move to approve the budget as presented for 2026.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul. Any discussion? Seeing none, now I can ask for a roll call vote. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Now let's see if I can get the meeting back on track and go to item twelve B one, which is the item that was removed from the consent agenda. It is the rezoning request for forty-three eighty-four Blue Star Highway. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Steve Peterson is going to make his way up and make a presentation on this. What I will do is just highlight for the viewing public and for council, what is in your report, just a little bit of background on this. This again is property related to the four twenty-five agreement, the cooperative agreement that we reached with Fillmore Township in 2022. And in this case, it's forty-eight acres, not all of the property that was involved in that four twenty-five, but a good portion of that property. And in particular, I think Steve is going to talk about why the rezoning and the process of how property comes into the city and then how we take a look at various factors, including our master plan and have conversation with the property owner and why this recommendation is coming before you tonight. And again, no action on this this evening, but because of tulip time, we have back-to-back weeks, this would be proposed for final action next week, Wednesday night. Take it away, Steve.
Great, yeah, thanks Keith. So what you're looking at here is the couple of graphics that we threw in there. So the one on the left is the property zoned LDR, that's the yellow color. Of course, I outlined it in yellow to make it really easy to see there, but the middle picture is the requested rezoning. So the area outlined in green is what they are asking to do. So changing the zoning from LDR to industrial with a little bit of commercial on the corner there. So spoiler alert, this is exactly what our master plan looks like in terms of zoning for this area. And as Keith mentioned, this is property that came into the city. Udo uses the word annexation, so through that process, when something comes into the city, through that, we have a little formula. And because it was zoned agricultural in the township, it comes in as a zoned LDR in the city. So that's just kind of how we zone the property when it comes into the city. Of course, they're asking for it to be changed to industrial and commercial, as I mentioned, which is, as you kind of see from the right-hand side of that slide, picture of our master plan was, is what we master planned this area for. So that's a little bit of the spoiler for what you're going to hear about next week. So recommendation was from Planning Commission to approve this. So again, spoiler alert, that's what you're going to hear next week as well.
Okay, questions for staff, Mr. Freeman?
Steve, can you unpack the red as well?
So the red is the CMU zoning district, so sort of our commercial zoning district. And the reason why they really drew a distinction there is that's where the feed store is. And so really to make that conforming, if you will, to our zoning, they wanted to have that corner commercial. Doesn't mean that if they have a buyer who wants to buy that whole piece that wants to be industrial, that, you know, they might want to rezone that piece to industrial in the future, but right now, they have no plans for this piece of property. They are really just rezoning it in hopes to be able to market it to somebody. I hope that answered your question.
Great, any other questions for staff?
One thing, Steve, so even though it's industrial, it can still be farmed, correct?
Sure.
Least out is farmed.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. The other part is, I don't like LDR, I never have. I think I've conveyed that language before, but either way, I've been an advocate for LDR across the city, right? We want to make sure we have enough opportunity for property to be built for homes, right? And so I'm very, very, I'm a big advocate for LDR in the sense of what it's being used for in the city. So I want people to see this as it's not really intended for that purpose when we brought it into the annexation. That was the, so I just wanted to make sure I take it off the agenda for that explanation back to the public, why we're doing what we're doing. So just want to make that perfectly clear because I know what, how people are positioned and their arguments were while we're getting rid of opportunities to build housing and that's not what this was intended to do to begin with. So, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or comments?
Thanks for clarifying that, Scott. I think that's what, you summed it up really well and obviously Steve, you did as well. So thanks for bringing it off.
And no action on this?
We just needed to move to next week so we can do the final decision.
Okay, do we need a, any vote at all, motion and a vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And voice vote good on this, Vince? Or you want to do a roll call on this? We'll do a roll call just to make everybody happy.
Roll call initially with, on the consent agenda, so.
Okay, all right, sounds good. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the rezoning request forty-three eighty-four Blue Star Highway with final adoption May twenty-one, twenty twenty-five?
Moved by Corbin.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Soul?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, if I'm doing this correctly, is item twelve Echo six point one gifts. Brenda, would you please review the gifts for us?
Okay, the city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. For the Department of Public Safety Services Fire Division, an in-kind donation from the Van Dyken family of a six-foot by ten-foot American flag to hang in the Collin Park Fire Station in honor of our nation's veterans and first responders, the value at one hundred twenty-nine dollars. And for the Parks and Recreation Department, Cell Press Scholarship Program, a total of two thousand five hundred eight dollars seventy-five cents collected from the twenty-twenty-five Cell Press Scholarship Fundraising Softball Tournament, which was held on April nineteen, broken down to two thousand fifty-five dollars in team fees, one hundred thirty-five dollars for the Arnie Rangel donation and three hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents from the concessions. It's recommended these gifts be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate accounts, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to the donors.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve said gifts with the credit to the appropriate accounts and a note of gratitude.
Moved by Soul, is there support? Support. Support by Shay, any discussion? I just wanted to make a comment. This is not the first occasion that the Van Dyken family has donated a flag to one of our buildings. I just, I know that Mr. Van Dyken doesn't like the spotlight very much, but I wanted to make sure that he knew that that was recognized and appreciated. Thank you, thank you very much. I think that's a great gift and a great tradition that you and your family have for the City of Holland and new buildings that are here. So thank you very much. Brenda, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item twelve Echo six point two, adoption of the twenty-twenty-six strategic plan and business plan. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I promise I'll go relatively quick here and be able to answer any questions you might have. You know that now we have a multi-year tradition that in support of the budget, and really it's the foundation for the budget, but then it's also the execution of the budget. So you have the strategic plan portion that I would say is the foundation for the decisions that we bring forward to you and you approve in the budget. But the business plan is then how do we turn that into action and make sure that we're accomplishing those things and moving things forward? So this year, many, many, many thanks to Mallory Heisinga in our office. I hope Mallory sees this, thank you Mallory, for just continuing to take something and keeping it fresh, taking a look at new opportunities to communicate here, not only a nice cover page, but the process, the rationale, the reasons of why we do these things, to always bring it back to our vision, mission, and value statements, which I think any organization will tell you to always remember those things, to talk about those things, so that we all understand the foundation of why we're doing what we're doing and that we're doing them within values. And then the priorities that you all ranked way back in January and just how we present those and always bring those forward. And as all you know, every item on your agenda is tied back to the strategic and business plan. So we just think that's good process. So that is all laid before you with a recommendation to adopt this for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. And then you know that quarterly, we provide you with an update on how we're making progress on those or having discussions if we've run into some issues that we need to talk about. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for staff? I just wanted to thank you, Keith. This is part of that process from start to finish. Not only do we adopt the budget, but then goes through with the business plan. And for those members of the public who are interested in taking a look, each and every action item that we have refers directly back to this business plan so that people can see from start to finish it goes and references back to what our priorities are as well. So we are, we are one hundred percent full circle on all of this and I think that is a great process for us to go through and that is your doing, so thank you. Any other questions, discussion? What is the pleasure of council in regard to the adoption of the twenty-twenty-six strategic business, strategic plan and business plan?
Move to adopt.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Shay?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item thirteen, communications from the city manager, Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you. Just handful of things that I want to do quickly, both serious and more in fun. One, I see that Brian was here for most of the meeting, but he stepped out, so I'm going to ask that Brenda and Matt and Lynn maybe in particular pass along in meeting that you all have tomorrow. Even though we didn't spend time going through it tonight, you all realize that a very large portion of what Brian and his team do each year was all presented to you tonight and that you approve budgets, which is getting out there and taking care of our roads and our sidewalks and replacement and all the other things. It's a hefty portion of that capital improvement plan. So again, just regular work that is really important to providing services. So just kudos to Brian and his team and we look forward to, and there's lots of information in that document also that we put out there, but council or others, if you're looking for, hey, what roads are we going to do and what does that project look like, that's all available for the public and we'd love to talk to people about that. Tulip time. I think you'll hear more about it. We always take time to regroup a little bit and we're drawing upon data sources and quite often we'll have Matt Helms come in and talk about different things, so you'll hear more about this. But I guess as your city manager, I'll just say a couple of things. One, way to go. Our staff, I just continue to be amazed by their dedication, the way they just put their head down and get things done with a smile on their face, sometimes when you don't feel like it and you're really tired. But I think every indicator that we have and will share more with this is probably like every star aligned this year between weather, no rain, beautiful timing for the tulips, some really good news coverage, full buses. There were more people than I think most of us have ever seen that descended upon our fair city. And I will dare say that an unbelievably high percentage of them walked away with big smiles on their face. So we always, though, there's always those things, so I can assure you that there is always a great partnership and kind of a... always a great partnership and kind of a recap and a debrief of different things because we always are trying to learn and trying to improve upon things. So that is being scheduled and happening as, as we talk, because we don't want to, you know, go six months and say, yeah, I can't remember, like, we jump right on it. So thank you to a lot of people. And again, as I said in my prayer, just thankful that we did not have any major serious incidents. I do happen to know too, that it was shared with me today, that farmer's market had opening day today, and there was a vendor who shared with Kara on our staff, that in twenty-five years of being at the farmer's market, this was the busiest opening day that they could ever remember. So apparently things aren't slowing down. So I think a lot of kudos to a lot of people where, where people come, there must be some good things happening, right? Matt has you for your meeting next week, and I know you're always happy about that because somehow Matt makes them go faster and fewer words, so way to go, Matt. And with that, we had Community Impact Day, and I think other people are going to say things about that, there's some photos here, but apparently there was a story told, and I think we even have a video to document a pretty cool story that happened. I'm not even going to try to explain that, I'll leave that to someone else to explain that. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Next item on the agenda, appointments, communications from the mayor. Again, I'm going to, I'm going to echo what Mr. Van Beek said about tulip time, just wow, you hit it very well, and I'm going to leave a lot of the details, I think, to Mr. Freeman. I'm also going to let Mr. Freeman explain what that video was, but you may notice, Mr. Freeman and I have T-shirts on tonight, there are four members of council that, that were out with other city staff members today, and the last official number I heard was three thousand eight hundred volunteers throughout the city in dozens of different projects, some of which were benefiting the city of Holland, others that were benefiting nonprofit organizations. I believe this is the fourth year of Community Impact Day. This was an outgrowth of the West Coast Leadership Program. It started out as the afternoon of their graduation, started out with just a few hundred people and has grown to thirty-eight hundred volunteers. My guess is when all is said and done, it'll be over four thousand, that we're out doing four hours of volunteer work. What does that mean? That is sixteen thousand combined hours of volunteer work, which is the equivalent of four full-time employees. We had, I think, four hundred people out on the Unity Bridge today repainting the railing. That is the equivalent of one full-time employee for the city of Holland. So if the city had hired somebody to go and paint that railing, they would have been there all day, every day for a full year to paint that railing, and we got it almost all done in one day today. I think that's a real testament to this community. It's a real testament to the West Coast Chamber of Commerce, which came up with this idea that, that, that has seen this grow exponentially every single year, and they are trying to plant seeds of this idea across the country, and I will not be surprised if we are not seeing Community Impact Day all around the United States within a very short period of time. But just another wonderful thing that has grown right out of the city of Holland. And that is all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, appointments, motions, communications from council members, anything from council members, Mr. Freeman?
I'd just like to continue, continue a little bit of your gratitude and get, bring even some more facts and figures about the chamber did today. The thirty-eight hundred volunteers that made themselves available to our community was, also includes five other chambers of commerce and five other communities that are rolling up their sleeves. And so it's been quite, the leadership influence that the Chamber of Commerce has in the general state and our nation is just tremendous. And so we get to be a part of it, so that's kind of a fun deal. The video that you saw was, we were at, I'm going to find out who got that. But I was on the inside ring of a power pole painting on the inside with a bunch of men and women from Compassionate Heart Ministries. And so as these men and women are painting around me, I'm like, do not paint that part of the railing because I can get out, and they painted it. And so I'm like, darn you! And so I had them pick me up and get me out of there, so I could be mildly put together for tonight's meeting. So just again, on to mayor's comments, a ton of gratitude for what the city made available and managed today through Keith's leadership and Matt and all the team members, particularly in Parks and Rec. Just tremendous, tremendous amount of work to get ready for people volunteering, and so thank you. And that doesn't, and it's right on the back of tulip time, where we invite and have received probably huge numbers, we'll just say over five hundred thousand, right? And I got to see so many of them on Sixth Street, on that expanded beautiful area, and welcoming them for tours, walking tours that we sent them to the city. Meanwhile, our police force is continuing to do their job and ramped up efforts to keep the parade route safe. Residents made it happen and were flexible, had flexible spirits, the streets were barricaded and closed. Merchants just did it with gratitude and businesses exploded because of it. And you just can't, you can't understand the impact of the leadership of our community until you stand in the midst of visitors from other players of the nation and they ask how we do this. And you're able to explain the collaborative spirit that we have between nonprofits and education systems and nonprofits and city government and all the different parts of what makes Holland, Holland. And people go, how do you do this? It's because of our people and the collaborative spirit that we get to enjoy every day. And I just, I always put that out there and it's always at risk. We're always like two clicks away from it falling apart. But so we guard it and we protect it and we talk about it and to grow it and put light fires with it and grow it with water, right? Just to make this thing happen because we get to reap the benefits of it, we don't even know it. And so we've been here for two weeks navigating tons of visitors, businesses are exploding because of it, and all the other things we get to do the other fifty-two, fifty weeks a year because of what happened this week. And so just a really big heart of gratitude for Keith, your leadership and your whole team that you've empowered to lead well, so way to go.
Any other comments from council members? Mr. Corbin?
Yeah, certainly a thank you to all those community members that come out and their civic duty, right? I mean, it's all coming together and being part of it, so thank you for that. I just want to remind council that we do have Keith's evaluation coming up this year. May, we're going to start collecting survey results from all of you, so you'll be seeing that happening. In June, we'll collect those together, meet with our committee and the city manager to share those results, and in July, we'll present those back to council for discussion, recommendations, and et cetera, right? So we have that coming up, we need to be very mindful of that, make sure we get those surveys back to me really quickly so we can make sure we stay on task for that. I will also say that we're hopefully part of the, the Holland Board of Works, which I'm a member of representing this council, they've done some fabulous things, and one is the Strategic Development Team that we're about to launch again, once again, that, that is part of the Community Energy Plan that we've created over the years. And that was to take twenty-four metric tons in two thousand and ten and make that, reduce that to ten metric tons by twenty fifty. And then recently, we've updated that plan, just recently, last, what, four years ago, I guess now, we're going into our fifth year, to reduce it twelve point two five metric tons by twenty twenty-five. So that's a very aggressive, I, I think a very aggressive, but very realistic too. We have five levers that do that, the electoral portfolio, using how we use energy, building energy efficiency, transportation emission reduction, energy smart programs, and even financial mechanisms such as what we talked about tonight and past, the Holland Energy Fund, which is a contribution to help offset that carbon footprint residential community members have. And so really our focus there is energy, security, affordability, I think it's sustainability and efficiency, correct? So that's kind of our goal here. And we're doing good work in the city of Holland regarding that, and we're going to continue to do good work. And those comments that we received and public comment, we're, we're going to just tell you that we are really taking it serious and we're working hard on how we do this going forward. So thank you for those comments, and I hope that we can achieve what we're trying to achieve going forward.
Any other comments, communications from council members? Seeing none, there's just one motion I would accept at this time.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Freeman, is there support? Support by Raymond, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you all. Have a great.